We call the meeting to order at 6:06.
So this is the executive session minutes and the Waitley School Committee meeting for...
Face.
Oh, these are all the executive session and you must have the May 7th school committee meetings. So we're going to agree, I mean, you're going to vote on whether to accept those. It doesn't mean that those executive session minutes will be posted, just that you accept them.
Do we need a roll call to accept the... I don't think so, but...
We're gonna do a roll call anyway to accept those minutes.
How about if we, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May 7th as regular minutes?
Second.
A second.
Thank you. And then executive session on May 7th and executive session on November 6th.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for minutes from May 7th, 2018, and minutes from November 6th, 2017.
A second.
Thank you.
You want a call?
Bob?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
So when you said these aren't gonna be posted, what...
I'm not sure they're, they're going to be posted, but before I leave, the notes were written by me, so we want to approve the executive session notes.
I see. I think we do, we release executive session minutes one, one year after the meeting, after the meeting day.
Okay.
So it's just the...
And there's some that never get released correctly. We approve them, but we never, some of them we don't release because of...
Okay, so Patty, we'll have it over to you.
Okay, so you have some warrants to sign tonight. There's eight of them totaling $35,102.13. I don't see anything glaring at us that we will not finish the year in the positive. What we're gonna focus on this summer is any remainder money we're gonna use for technology projects. In the past, we've been loading up Bob Lesko at summer projects and we can't get it done in time to get the bills paid before August. So I'm gonna be meeting with Scott, which I haven't had a chance, 'cause he's been on paternity leave. So Scott and I are gonna get together and review all the schools and what their technology needs are. And that's what we're gonna focus on as long as you are okay with that.
Do we know what the projects are?
I, I don't at this point, Katie, 'cause I haven't had a chance to sit down. It would, it may be, for this school and Louise, maybe you can help me with this. I think we need some more phone book carts here and some smart, some replacements, some smart boards.
Some of them are getting old and not working.
And they're just easier, it's cheaper to replace than repair at this point, 'cause there, there's no updated technology.
So I guess with the summer, it's transition, it's a little tricky, because we don't meet in the summer. So who would have the authority with all the transition going on?
Just so that we don't, just you, just that we don't exceed our general ledger balance, that we would zero it.
Okay. So that would be under the interim or the new principal depending?
And I, I do have a statement for capital projects when it comes up in the agenda.
Okay.
And there is, yeah, the IT's finishing, current finishing up the whole system.
Okay, so you'll identify for, with Scott what might need to be done?
Mm-hmm. And we'll use any year-end funds to...
To fill that and then you'll coordinate with whoever's here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is that everything?
Yes, let me tell you if I have any questions.
Now, the budget you shared that is, or the financial summary that you shared is up to date. I noticed that the encumbrances for all the salaries are over, all, like the administrative salaries?
Uh...
That pushes the, the budgets over. I was just wondering.
Okay, so, so when, what I'm doing right now is I'm encumber, I'm manually encumbering.
I remember you saying this, is this the same problem again?
It is. So what, so what happened was before, because I had to make an adjustment to the report, Stephen had already posted the June 1st payrolls. So I had to reverse them all, so I didn't, I didn't pick up that he had already posted the fiscal agent payroll, so I didn't reverse that, so that's probably why.
So we're double counting, so they really are over?
They probably are.
'Cause they should be very close to zero.
To zero.
Or if not zero.
Some of them will be over, because we did not have them at the beginning of the year, and that would be the cafeteria team leader.
Okay, but all the central office ones are over?
Should be close to zero, yes.
That's great, okay, so that means we're in better shape than this is telling us. Okay, great. Um, okay, well, we have...
I got, I just got a question. Since you brought up the cafeteria, will we have some type of report in September on, on how our year went?
As soon as we've, Mary and I, let me just pull this up. Mary and I did work on the, on Waitley, and I think we have through April right now, so let me just... And then what I, as soon as we finish the year, what I will do is send you out an email with the final school lunch, how we did. And one of the things that I was not aware of, that we now have to watch, is that we can't have more than three months' worth of revenue sitting in the lunch balance. So I will have to, at some point, take some of our salaries and put them back into the school lunch balance to keep that down until, unless I talk with Bob Lesko, the other thing we can do, and with Mary DeLusa, buy a piece of equipment, because I know they were having a problem with something. One of the pieces of equipment was, because it had something to do with the water supply, it corroded something, so... And I can't remember the name of the piece of equipment, so I was gonna talk with them and see if we can get that either replaced over the summer, repaired over the summer, because it would help the kitchen, the women in the kitchen prep easier. So right now, we are showing through April, a deficit of $6,076.20. And I can tell you that last year, at the same time, through April, we were at a loss of $9,687.05. So that's a difference of $3,000. And that does include your share of what we paid for the consultant. So we are on the right path. Mary is making great decisions. Our participation seems to be up, so I think things are going very well. And as soon as we can post May, because when we were doing this, we don't have the May payrolls, they're coming in this week, 'cause May was last week. So as soon as we get May and June done, I will send you guys an email with the, with the profit and loss for the year and give you a little synopsis of how it compares to last year.
And does that include the salaries, the $6,000?
It does, it does.
It does, even though they're in...
They're right under the general...
Oh, great, okay, that's good news.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on the finances? We have some public here today, is there a public comment?
Yes, yes, I made a short list. Some things are probably quicker than others. I heard you say you're going to replace some smart boards in the schools. And I use smart boards at Smith. I think 10 years ago, smart boards were awesome. We had good support, and over the years, smart boards, the actual equipment, has become worse and worse, hard to get service. Something like that should not be less expensive to replace than to repair. The company's really not doing a good job here in the Northeast. We found a lot of other systems that cost far less and do the same thing. And I use one in my classroom at Smith. If anybody would like to come down and take a look at that and see, it can probably cut your equipment costs in half.
Joyce, would you send me an email with the, with the...
Then, yeah.
...what that you're using? And then I say smart boards, but Scott Paul is probably already saying, "Stop saying smart boards."
Oh, okay, okay, 'cause that's actually important.
Me not being up to date on technology, but if you wanna send me an email with what you're recommending, I will get that to Scott Paul and we can look at that.
And you may not be aware of this, but the folks at Wassman Audio, they service those things at many of the five colleges. They installed the ones in my, that I use in my lab now.
W-E-S-S-M-A-N?
Yeah, from Route 5 and 10 in Waitley. And they're, they're lovely and they're, they're so much better than the recent smart boards. So I'm glad to hear you, it might not really be smart boards.
Corrective whiteboards is what we did say, because...
Oh, okay.
I didn't know.
No more Kleenex.
Yeah, right, okay.
I'm still calling them chalkboards, not whiteboards. But thank you.
Well, I mean...
It'd be useful to know what's...
Yeah, and I understand, I mean, on here, it says that Peter Chrisafulli is in the room, so that's... So I know not everything that's, that's said or in writing is necessarily 100% true. The, I guess my other comments are mostly, one of them is just to, to the school committee, that I really feel strongly that for the Union 38 Superintendent search, that it should not just be an internal search. This really needs to be an external search. If we don't have enough money to make it a nationwide search, then at least a regional search, New York, New England, Northeast, whatever it happens to be. We really have to look at as large a pool as possible. I know there's a lot of defeatists out there who say, "Oh, we can't pay enough to attract anybody for this job." And I think that's not been true historically. We've had really good people in this job in the past. And I, as both a taxpayer and a selectman, really urge you to do whatever you can on that committee to really make sure we do as wide a search as possible on that. So that was just feedback for the, for the committee. The other thing I have is mostly a question. I was just having a conversation with our town clerk regarding agreements and negotiations. And my understanding is that there's an agreement being negotiated at this point between maybe the school system and our former principal, or... I don't know all the details of it, obviously, it's probably been in...
One point in order? We can't discuss that.
No, I have a, I have a question regarding the confidentiality part of it. My understanding, things like teacher negotiations are confidential until the agreement is reached, and then the agreement is public. And my understanding is that law would apply to whatever you're negotiating.
Absolutely not, there is a...
Yeah, so there must be an exemption, so that's the question. If there's an exemption, I would like to know which exemption it is that you're using.
Yeah, it's in the... Yeah, I'll have to contact the school's attorney, but it is...
Like, yeah, so that's, so that's my question.
We can't discuss it.
What, if there's, if you're using an exemption, I'd like to know what the exemption is. I think there is, there are many, many people who would like to know more about the circumstances of the resignation. I think that's actually not an unfair thing. And I think it does not do our schools well when that sort of thing is swept under the rug. You know, daylight is one of the best disinfectants. So, so I urge you to be as open as you possibly can with that, and I will, I, I will press forward regarding whether the exemption applies, just because I think that's the right thing to do. And I think that was all, sorry, that was all I think that I was gonna ask and, and add as public comment.
Great.
Oh, I suppose that there's something later on the agenda, and I know you're not, not supposed to normally go to those in, in public comment, but I'm likely to be the selectman's representative on your search committee for the new principal. It won't be official until our meeting on the 15th, so of course, they could change their mind, and you might have Fred. But at this point, this sort of the Brian, it was kinda testing the water. So I don't know, 'cause I haven't talked to John and Fred, but that's likely to happen. So this principal search timeline and procedure, if it can happen as quickly, as, as early as possible in the meeting, I will get out of your hair. I know you, you might not have the flexibility to move items around on your agenda, and I understand if not, but...
Well, I know that Louise, you did receive an email saying that you were gonna be the representative pending the vote.
Yes.
And Louise did forward you information on your email also with that saying...
Oh, when?
Probably you haven't seen it, 'cause it was like 5 o'clock this afternoon.
Oh, if it was 4:30, I would've seen it, but 5, I would not have, so...
I can't tell the exact... But it was the end of the day.
You can't, you can't tell me the exact...
But I am happy to jump to that, unless you guys need to get through the voting. Patty needs to get going.
No.
But I think you need a motion to take it out of order.
Okay.
So before we make a motion, it's just...
Submove.
Okay, Louise, you're on, all right. Well, this is, I am printing for you all of the information. Joyce, this is all in your email, but I'll give it to you here in hard copy. So this is a process that I modeled on a process we've used in other schools. And I chaired the committee in Conway and used a very similar process. So first, we'll form a committee, and we're going to have two parent reps will be invited. One rep of the school committee, one representative of the community, so that's what Joyce was speaking of. Two teachers, one specialist teacher, and one Waitley staff member, and that person has been chosen, Mary Wazenski, who works very closely with the principal. I'll be facilitating. The parent community was notified of the opportunity. When I wrote this, I said, "Will be notified." Interested parents are invited to submit a statement in writing to the school council. So we are getting those in now. We have, I believe, three as of this moment. The school council will review the statements and select two parent reps. The search committee will have an initial planning meeting, I'm hoping for this Friday. We're condensing the timeline, because we would like an opportunity for the community and the faculty and the staff here to meet the candidates during the school, when school is in session. Staff survey has been distributed online, and I'm already getting, it's a, it's a Google survey, and teachers are already responding. And there's copy of those surveys in here. The parent survey was distributed both online and in hard copy to ensure that all families are offered the opportunity to share their thoughts. So what we're looking for is what are you seeking in a principal? Looking for comments, and that, that will be reviewed before the committee begins even looking at the resumes. Parent responses, as I said, will be reviewed by the members of search committee prior to reviewing resumes, so we can see what the commonalities are and ensure that we are reflecting what the community is saying that they are seeking, both the staff community and the family community. The position has been advertised online in an online resource called School Spring, and that's become a, it's an international search engine, or it's not really a search engine, it's a posting site where people who are looking for positions regularly check it. It is the, the sort of Amazon of, of looking for a, an education job in the K-12 system. So it's been posted since May 30th, and it has been in print media, it's been in the Daily Hampshire Gazette this weekend, and in the Greenfield Recorder. As of this, I last checked, at 4 o'clock, we had 21 applications.
Wow.
So the, in the middle of June, after we have planning meeting to talk about the parameters of the search, we will then review the applications and identify candidates to invite. And the number of candidates we invite depends on the, the search committee. We might find five we wanna invite, we might find 10, but we will look at those who meet the qualifications. We'll have initial interviews, we're hoping, mid to late June. And again, I'm hoping to get those in prior to the end of school, because it's, it's a nice opportunity for the candidates to see the school in action and get a sense of what, what they're actually applying for. The search committee, after the interviews, will recommend finalists from those interviewed. The finalists will then be invited to visit with, with Waitley to meet staff and faculty and with the parent community. So the parent and the broader community will be invited to come. We'll have, one of the things we did in Conway that worked, and depending on this, this community, what time of day works, is we had a breakfast. We invited anybody in the community interested, and we invited written feedback. And we had feedback sheets right there on the way out. People offered their feedback on the candidates, both the staff, our staff, faculty, and anybody who comes and meets with the person. The formal, a format for gathering, again, would be written feedback. Members of the search committee will also, if feasible, and this is why it would be great to do before the end of the year, conduct site visits to any schools where the current candidates, where the current candidates currently work. If we can't do site visits, perhaps we will Skype with people, and the committee will come up with a list of who they would like to talk to. In other words, you know, maybe we wanna talk to two teachers, three parents, and so we'll come up with that list and, and use that to get feedback from what we call the site visits. And then in, in early to mid-July, the superintendent will review the written feedback from the community, conduct interviews, conduct the reference checks, and then we hope by mid to late July, we will know who the new principal will be. So that's the detail. This is the timeline. It's, it is an optimistic timeline, but I'm also feeling that it's not unrealistic, being that as soon as we put it in, we got, within hours, had candidates. And since, since the weekend, now we have, as I said, 21, I'm anticipating more. And then this is the posting that went out. So I just wanted you to have a copy of what we said. We set a high bar, high standard. Then these are the, the next page is the email that I sent out to the faculty explaining the process. The following is the family email and hard copy, went home to families on May 31st. The next page is, is parents who are interested in serving on the committee are asked to submit a written statement, and the school council will review those and select the parents they feel will best represent. And then this is the letter I sent out about the parent survey. And then here's the family, family survey and the faculty and staff survey. The questions are, "What do you value? What skills are we seeking? And what do you hope the next principal will bring?" And space for additional comments. And then the final page are the Massachusetts Department of Elementary-Secondary Education Professional Standards for School Level Administrative Leadership that the committee will also review and ensure that the candidates meet those standards. So that's, that's the process, that's where we are. Hoping by this Friday to be able to get the ball rolling with reviewing the process with the committee members. So, any questions about that?
So the committee has been...
Not yet. I, we've, I believe tomorrow night, the school council, no, Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Wednesday night, the school council will meet and review the parent submissions and choose two parents to participate. And the teachers, I don't know...
Teachers' union will select who they would like to represent them. So they will give me the names by Wednesday. They've already sent out and asked people to come forward if they're interested. So they will select their representatives, and then the Waitley town representatives will select their, their representative. And you folks will select your representative.
Right, I don't know if we need to formally do that in this meeting, but... Would probably be a good idea, since you're all here.
Yeah.
I make a motion to have Katie as our school representative in the principal search.
I second.
Is that fast enough for you?
Yeah, that's good. I just like it to be official.
For the principal search, thank you.
Just a, just a question.
Yes.
Can other, during the interviews or search, can other committee members go to these meetings just to sit in the, in the wings?
Not that, the interviews are not public until the final stages. When the finalists are identified, those will be public meetings. But the initial interviews are not public meetings, so...
I didn't know, us being on the school committee, that we could do that. We're no different than anybody then.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that. It's, it's a private... But then, once finalists are identified, then their names are made public. And then at that point, that, what worked, as I said, what worked well in the prior search was having this morning where, and we did invite the cable access in. Unfortunately, the cable access person was ill that day, so we didn't get it. But we're happy to do that here, so people out in the community can see who these finalists, if they can't make it to the meeting. When the finalists came, come in, and it was informal, but people had a lot of questions, and they were, it was two separate days, and then they stayed and had lunch with faculty who wanted to come in and ask questions. So the nice thing about it is, we had a lot of feedback about the candidates. And so when the superintendent went to do the final interviews, she had a significant amount of feedback about both candidates and then did the reference checks. So I'd like to do that. That's why the, the timeline's a little bit condensed, because we, we need to get this in before everybody's away for the summer.
Is this timeline more condensed than the Conway search?
Yes, we had three months. If we spent three months, we would be in September. And so we had ample knowledge that the principal was retiring. And she announced that in September. We conducted the search, I began it in January, and it took until early April.
And how many people did you get applying?
26. I think what, the difference is, I wouldn't ask for the initial meeting to be so soon, give it a little more time, but there's no step that was taken in Waitley that, I mean, in Conway that I'm leaving out here. It's just, instead of saying, "After the interviews, we'll go to site visits." Two weeks from now, we're doing it tomorrow. So that, we're not leaving any important step out, and it won't compromise the information we get. We're just gonna leave the candidates a little less breathing room, is what's going to happen. You know, they might turn around and you might say, "You're a finalist, we'd like to visit your school by Friday." And so we'll tell people that in the initial interview. If you are selected as a finalist, we might be conducting a site visit, but it's very important to talk to folks on-site, whether we do that remotely or actually visit. But there will be a list that the committee will identify who they would like to talk to, what roles, not the people, but the roles.
So is there any, does this, does it indicate anywhere, like, how many meetings you think there will be for the search committee? Just for the people, like, who are working?
Right.
The parents who...
What I'm anticipating is what's on here on the timeline, the initial meeting, June 8th. We gave a deadline of June 10th. We posted May 30th, and June 10th is the deadline for applications. I'd like to hold the, after the initial meeting, by, I should say, by June 14th, actually call a meeting where, after we come up with the parameters and how we're going to rate the candidates, it might take two or three hours to sit with the, with the staff, with each person. What, what's different, in Conway, they took them home for a weekend and did it there. I think we, we're gonna need to just say, "Commit the time, do it right now." We're gonna rate, and based on the criteria that the committee comes up with, based on the feedback from the faculty and the professional standards. So I'm hoping by that, that's the following Thursday, that we'll at least be able to... So that day will be a long day. The day where we sit, review applications, discuss, and select candidates.
And that would be like a weekday?
That's a Thursday.
Like an all-day type?
That's a Thursday. And depending, I certainly want to be sensitive to people's schedules. So when we have the initial planning meeting, I'll offer options and we'll see what is best for people.
But before that, you'll probably have several meetings to.
No, one meeting, one organizational meeting. Then I'm going to leave people some research to read about conducting searches and about administrative leadership. So they'll read that over, over the next few days. And then we will come back together. Since the deadline's the 10th, it will give us time to review the resumes. And what I'm hoping to do is redact all of the names and have candidate one, candidate two, candidate three. And that re, that ensures that there is no unconscious bias for gender or any kind of ethnicity in names that we just, and so that will take some time. That's a process of, of redacting the names. And then, so that's why I need four days to do that, because that's a, a big digital. I, I will not be a voting member, I'm going to facilitate. So I will know who the names, but I'm going to give it to you as candidate one, two, and the team itself will, based on the criteria we agreed to, will, will rate them. And, and then it will have, hopefully after the 14th, that's a Thursday, hopefully start the interviews that Monday. Depending on how many people we identify, if indeed the team identifies five, usually you need roughly an hour, about a 45-minute interview to an hour and then some time in between. Possibly, if people's schedules allow, it would be one big day. Or if we identify more or people feel like five hours of interviewing is too much, we'll split it. So there's some flexibility built in, but that's why I said that week, like to get it done early in the week so that we could have the site visits before school is over. Because that gives everybody who works at the school an opportunity to meet, to talk to the finalists and to give their feedback. So that's, the time commitment will be, I don't know how fast people read. So on the 14th, when we sit down, and I'm putting that as a tentative date, when we meet on June 8th, if, if most people say, you know, Wednesday's better, Wednesdays are better, you know, I want to be flexible there. But I'd like to walk out of here Friday knowing who we're interviewing Monday and Tuesday, or Tuesday and Wednesday, so that then we could turn around and have the person come before Friday, the last day of school, so that people can meet. And actually, we're going to need two days because we don't want them to come at the same time. So, so that's the kind of crunch on it. It, it's not going to compromise the quality of what we do, it's just going to put more pressure on the candidates to make sure they can turn around and come back.
And those last couple of days are not regular days.
Correct. But it doesn't matter because what the important thing is, is that the community and the staff gets to meet the people, gets to meet the finalists, whether we have two or three, and gets to give some, just candid feedback. What's your feeling about this person? They feel like a match? Or whatever people want to say, it will be read. And then, so June 21st, oh, I said the, the site visits to the finalist schools or by the 28th. I'm hoping to get the finalists to our school, to our, to Whately before the last day of school. It might not be possible, depending on our interview schedule. You know, maybe we want to, maybe we find eight people we want to interview and we take it over three days. So that's why it's impossible to know exactly. It's, it's going to depend on the quality of the candidates. And whether we have five, six, seven that look great, we'll bring them all in. So.
And who will be checking the references? You?
Superintendent. And that's why it's very important to have at least two finalists because references, that's, that's a confidential, you know, somebody who's put themselves out here and has gone through all that, we don't want to make so public that one of the references wasn't so crazy about them. And that's really the, that's why the superintendent makes that decision and calls and, and really weighs out the words of the, of the references. But also, we'll be reviewing the feedback. And so it's as inclusive a process as I could imagine making it while still maintaining high degree of quality of the process and ensuring that we do it in a professional manner.
Yeah, two comments. One is, as we've talked to the teachers also, this is very condensed. And if it, if it turns out that we don't have the quality in the pool or we feel like we're rushing, we're also prepared to do an interim principal if that seems to be the best solution for Whately. I just want people to know, we want it, we believe we'll find the good quality in this pool, but we're also mindful that it is going quickly and things could happen that lead us to.
They won't settle. I mean, sometimes, sometimes your best candidates have their foot in another search and are offered something different. So we can't assume that the one we like best will like us best. So we have to leave ourselves.
Our options.
Options, yes. And I, I agree. The school's a fine place. I've been enjoying being here and we're not going to settle.
And the other thing is, I don't know if we'd consider doing like a Google Drive where we could put all the documents for people to read?
Absolutely.
So then if they do have time and then they want to look at them ahead of the meetings, that might be a good way to do it.
Yeah, we could do that depending. And that's why I want to have an organizational meeting first to find out what people's technology capacity, what their preferred method of reading, what their, you know, I, I want to be flexible to the people that we have. But we won't do that until we have the committee in front of us and say, here's options. You know, some people do prefer digital, some people prefer print.
Anything else? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Louise. Thanks for all your good work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to the unfinished business. Patty?
Do you want your agenda back?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. So you can keep it if you.
All right, I don't want to.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you. We'll probably see you a little more.
Yeah, I'll be seeing you.
So last month, we talked about the cafeteria team leader position and the salary schedule. And we decided to table it and have the vote tonight. It's a position that we're having in all five of the schools that we agreed to, well, we brought it up at the April joint committee meeting and for whatever reason, it wasn't voted on. And we thought it was, and it was.
I thought it wasn't.
We were going to have the vote on the May agenda.
Yeah, on the May agenda.
But then, so because we forgot to put the vote on the May agenda, we presented it to you again individually for you to vote tonight.
I see. Okay.
So, and you can see by the data here that there are some, you know, there's some additional chores, that's responsibilities for the position. So they have to oversee and assist all aspects of the food production in the assigned school. They plan and direct the preparation and serving of all food. They work with the food service director for purchasing and ordering. They're responsible for taking monthly inventory. They ensure that the equipment is safe, clean and in working condition. They maintain accurate production records conforming to federal departmental guidelines. And they maintain the health and food safety standards set by ServeSafe. So, and they also practice sound food allergy prevention. And this is the scale depending on how many years the person has been here. So if you are willing to vote on that.
So moved.
Okay, Bob Hawla.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you. Last month, I brought to you the non-union salary recommendations. And we tabled that because, well, we didn't table it, it was just for your information of last month. Did I say last year?
Last month, I think you said last month.
So last month. So tonight, if, if you have any questions, Patty's here. If not, if you would like to vote on those.
Wasn't there an issue with the step of stepping the non-union salary? Or am I not remembering that correctly?
So we.
The long serving.
Well, what, what happened was when we looked at the salary schedule for the cafeteria team leaders, the person who works in that position in this building is already at the maximum. So she would not be receiving a raise this year because we could not go higher than that when we looked at the comparables of other Franklin County schools. But as you know, Julie Sibley and Kathy did attend last month's meeting. Mary and I have met. So we are going to give Kathy some extra time, which will increase her, her pay.
Is that like a, on a, a week or?
Uh, I think it's, it's like a quarter of an hour a day. I believe we're giving her, Julie, we gave, I'd already made the change and Kathy, we're now going to make a, she's going to get 15 extra minutes a day. So thirty, it's two, two and a quarter hours a week.
And are we going to look to the preschool to help with that or are we, to pay for it? Or will we just, are we able to afford that?
I think with, with the money that we have, that we're going to have sitting in the account because we've been using the general ledger, that we'll be okay.
Okay.
This is good.
Good.
So this non-union, so that's this from last month, right?
Right. And there's just two changes. One, of course, we wouldn't be approving, we would be removing the principal. And also today, we did receive a resignation from a custodian, so that one would be coming.
And this will be in this building?
Yeah. So that you wouldn't be approving that one either. So those would be the only two changes.
I make a motion for the non-union salary recommendations.
All in favor?
Thank you. And the, you'll see a list. I don't know how many of you have the list, but.
I printed a few.
There's many, there's, well, there's actually just these two pages, but all of these, I don't know how many of you have these, but all of these are the policies that, and Bob was at all those meetings. So the policies that have been changed. And pretty much everything, everything is listed. Donna, Donna Hathaway did a great job on this. It was, it was quite a lot of work to, to go through each and every one of these. We did that work and then I had to give that information to her. She would strike out and or add, and as soon as you approve, as soon as the five school committees approve it, it will go to the Massachusetts Association of School, School Committees and it will be posted, uploaded on our website and we'll live by these policies. But if you can see what she did, she actually wrote in italics everything we did. So, you know, naming facilities, we updated to reflect best practices. First aid, added the policy, by policy review committee superintendent to include notification of the Mass Department of Public Health of Epi, Demolit.
Epidemial.
Yeah, that's the word.
Say that two times.
I could have said it, but I didn't want to say it on TV.
I don't think missing the P. It's missing a P.
Oh, yeah, there's no P there. So you can see like the wellness plan, we took out the appendix and appendices and we put that in, in our procedures. Sex education, a new policy to the districts.
And we had a couple of late ones, didn't we?
Yeah. And they're all in here alphabetical now. So she did a beautiful job. So custodial rights, updated language. So we took out, we took out KJA, but we added in KBE, new number for relations with parent booster organizations. And public complaints, updated language. We deleted public complaints about school personnel, KEB, because we made it KE period and KEC. So, but we went through all of these. It actually seems like we did a lot more than this, but if we approve of these, this will be great.
Not saying they won't have more coming about.
Right, it seems like it's an ongoing thing now.
It is because the law's changed so much and as soon as a case gets heard, then everybody has to back up and change it.
And how different are these from other districts? Is, I mean, are they?
Identical.
They're identical.
Pretty much.
So what is the work that you guys have to do just to adapt it?
To adapt it to our district. So I think that the essence of the law or the essence of the policy is pretty standardized. But then there's certain things and qualifiers that may not suit Frontier or Union 38 or some that will make a difference that we would, that would protect us in our own practice. So everything had to be, you know, well thought out of and every angle, just ensuring that we're covered liability-wise. Because this will be out into the public and they'll understand too. If they say, well, how come I can't do this? And we say, well, it's a policy, KBC, and you know, just look it up.
We used to get this policy book that was about eighth thick.
I think I got that my first year. But nowadays, they're all online through the district's website, right?
Yeah, we, the Massachusetts Association of.
Connects to that.
Connect, puts it on our site for us. And they're the keeper, but it's right on. That's where I go for everything. I, I don't look up that book.
Right, that's great. Okay, well, I think, does anyone have to be a question for me?
I do. I just, maybe clarification, I don't remember. I have too many piles here. The school council ones.
Where are they? What numbers, letters?
These. Wait a minute, school, school, uh, B, the BDFA ones, there's an E, E1, E2, E3. It says, and I think more than one of them, something about the superintendent approves the school improvement plan, but I thought it was also the school committee's job to approve the school improvement plan. It says the school committee reviews it, but the superintendent approves it. Because I thought we voted on that and approved it.
We, we, we do. We do vote on it. But legally, the school committee does policy and hiring superintendent and business manager and budget. And those are really the only three plans legally.
I just wanted to.
But it's, it's important, I think, to the school to understand and to know that the school committee is behind the improvement plan. So to have them vote, I think is, is very important. They didn't have to vote the district strategic plan either, but they did.
So it's a way of accepting it, really?
Yes, it's just a way of accepting it, yeah.
BDFAE says the school council will meet quarterly, but E3 says they need to meet at least once a month.
We actually.
Unless that was one of the newer ones.
Those, yeah, that's, we actually.
I didn't get to this.
Yes, we changed that, we modified that for our practice.
Okay.
We didn't want to put something in that wasn't happening.
Well, it's just not consistent between the two. One says monthly.
Well, we actually combined BDFAE, BDFAE1, E2 and E3, and they're all in this BDFAE and they say quarterly.
So was that one of the ones that was sent a second time?
Yep.
I'll take a second batch. Okay.
Yep.
Too many. That's a lot.
It's some great reading. If you, you know, you get a laptop, go to bed and just read all the policy. Interesting.
I've been reading.
It's important. It's interesting, it is.
The last time we did it was Marty.
It wasn't that long ago.
Three years, three years ago. We had a hundred and, it was a lot. We had some help from, what's her name?
Pacaria.
Yeah, Pacaria came and helped. And she would say, you know, if you had a question, she'd let me make a note and I'll bring it back to the next meeting. And it was like, well, that's what you were doing this time. You had, we had a question, you would get the answer, bring it back to us the next meeting and then we would go on to new ones. It was like.
And I think that's where your question earlier had come about the longtime people because we did talk.
Wasn't there an issue with policies?
Yes, we, we talked about.
What should I handle?
There's a, there's a, and I forget what it's GB, it's GB and GB1 and that is the non-union policy that we have. And it was so complex and far-reaching that the idea would be in the fall that a subcommittee would get together just to look at that.
Oh, okay, so that's sort of tabled.
Yeah. All we wanted to really look at was longevity, but then that kind of dominoed into other things. So we decided to table that.
Yeah, that was what I was saying.
And what we really want to try to do is have all the elementaries and the high school because the high school had one terminology for non-union and then Union 38 had something different. The Union 38 had some good things and the Frontier had some good things. What we want to do is try to make them all the same when there's new, when there's new hires at both locations, try to anyway.
So GB is Frontier and GB1 is Union 38.
I'll make, can I make a motion for the policy changes and additions?
A second.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
A second.
So we did the principal search. So interim leadership arrangement, I just wanted to make sure we're clear what's going to happen over the summer.
Well, right now. Well, right now Kristen is taking the lead. Kristen Gordon, the principal of Conway, she's taking the lead. And my understanding is that she, in this trying time, she's doing a wonderful job. I think that the teachers are pleased with her affect, her way of handling things, her wisdom. So she's really great. I thought she'd be a good fit for, for here during this time. And Louise is helping mostly through the, the search process, which they, she did the search for Conway, so this is a perfect fit for her. My understanding is the new principal will be hired probably within the first week of July. And that would probably take two to three weeks maybe for that person to give notice where they are to come here. And I expect that the new person would be in place definitely by April 1st. And up until.
August 1st.
I'm sorry, August 1st. And, but meanwhile, I think Kristen would be available for any, anything that would be happening at the school during that time. I think Kristen would be able to answer personnel things, do searches if we're losing an IA, getting an IA, or filling out, you know, say we get a student, we receive a student that has, that needs a one-to-one or some kind of issue. I, I have a lot of faith in Kristen.
Just give me an idea of what happens in the summer here? Cause I don't think a lot happens in Whately.
Right.
So is the preschool, is not in session? But they are having a camp of something?
Well, they're going. I thought they were going to be in session.
They have a program, but I've, I'm thinking.
They were doing like a one month thing or something.
Well, there's a two week camp. You can choose one weeks, or one week or both weeks, but I thought.
I'm not sure it's here. I'm wondering if she isn't centralizing. I believe there's going to be one in Sunderland and one in Deerfield. I do, I have to be honest with you. I did not think there was going to be one here. She did one two summers ago because Deerfield had closed because of the roof.
The roof, right.
But.
Your timeout.
Didn't we do the science camp here last summer?
Yeah, we did the science camp.
That's not the preschool. We're talking about, the science camp will be here.
So there's going to be a preschool camp, but there's also preschool through the summer. You're saying the preschool through the summer is not here?
I do not believe so.
Okay. But I think the camp is.
The whole summer?
Well, I think Kristi is doing a special camp to try and raise money for a playground.
Oh, 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 okay. Well, that's, yes. Yeah, that's possible.
So they would probably be the only ones here at that time. And then in August, there's the science camp.
Science, but the week before school starts, they'll have the science camp here.
Yeah, that's. And so then, other than that, there's really not much happening.
No.
I think usually Mary's here and the principal and maybe the custodian. The school nurse will be here if there's a camp, or a school nurse, I don't.
Yes.
Cause there was a school nurse here for invention camp.
Well, every single, every single room gets cleaned up and stuff. So that's, that's a big part. We usually hire at least one of the high school kids. I remember in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, but they've always hired somebody to help the custodians and stuff and.
So we have a bit of a gap there this year because of the turnover with the custodians? Or?
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
It's very unfortunate, but they will, they'll find the people.
Bob Lesko.
Yeah. It was a college guy. It was a college guy who actually came back to talk to, to, you know, to support Andy. He came back and spoke. He goes to Greenfield Community College, nice guy. So he'll be here. And of course, your, the custodian you do have.
Okay. So Bob will be overseeing that work.
Definitely. Yeah, he generally does.
Being concerned with the principal, but because.
Yeah.
Right.
At this point, yeah.
So will Kristen be in Conway but supporting? She'll physically be.
She'll continue until there's a new principal.
She may come in and check in with Mary and, you know. But she, just with her background knowledge and everything, she just was a, it was a good, good fit.
Okay. And Patty, you'll keep an eye on the budget. I guess I'm just mindful of projects that happen over the summer. We want to make sure that we're not spending money and we don't have to.
And I have a report from Bob Lesko.
Okay.
For the next, so.
But Patty also was talking about any extra money. Where we usually do some projects, we're, we're talking technology.
More technology.
Or technology at the end of the year versus projects that never can get done at the proper time for the budget money and stuff.
Right. So when you encumber money in June, by, at June 30th, the project should be in, should be started. Should be in process. And with five schools, we can't always do that. So we thought we'd phone, we, Scott can get these technology projects going this month.
That makes sense. And then Bob can focus on the cleaning and maybe whatever else might come up.
We probably will do carpets or anything this year.
Well, and then it's things that would like come up with the town warrant if they had given us money. And we've got other schools that did have warrant money, so.
Sprinkler systems.
And sprinkler systems.
I've got that report right here. Do you want to hear it?
Okay.
Projects completed at Whately Elementary School during this fiscal year include the replacement of the garage door and roof. That was last summer. New flooring in four classrooms. AC in the library IT computer closet. And that was from encumbered 1617 funds. And the purchase of a snow blower, which came from school choice funds. Several additional projects were also completed. These included replacement of the exterior gym doors, installation of a bottle filler water cooler, repairs to pipes and installation of antifreeze in the heating system during extremely cold weather, less heating system. Our IT department is currently finishing up a project to replace the phone system. The new centrally reset clocks and intercom systems will be replaced over this summer. And that's from warrant article number 10. We are working with Brian Domina, Whately Town Manager, who has put together a project to repair the sprinkler system in the school that is going out to bid this week. It currently has a projected completion day of August 31st, 2018. Brian has also indicated that Deerfield Academy has offered the school a used backup generator that may work out for the school slash town.
Oh, that's good.
You've been talking about that, Bob.
Oh, be happy.
I'm holding my breath still.
Yeah.
Did you, and if you talk to Brian, talk to him about it. Ask him about it. So there has been a lot of work done. And so the plan right now, the biggest plan, and that's why we didn't ask for any warrant articles this year is because we are hearing anywhere from a hundred to 200 to whatever thousands for the sprinkler. But we may have another way to blow it out and figure out exactly where the problem is. So that will come to fruition in a couple of weeks. And Brian took the lead on that, which was great of him to do.
Right. And that's a priority. And then finishing the speaker.
Yeah, that's.
Is another area. So there's plenty to do. I'm not trying to find more projects. I'm just trying to make sure we're clear on what's getting done and that we have the money to pay for it.
I agree.
Well, some of these projects, we have the money there.
Yeah, it's been.
Just waiting for it to get done.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So no votes necessary. That was the capital projects. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Lynn for her work, good work again with Whately Elementary. And wish you well in your next adventure. And also to thank Pete for his good work with Whately for the last nine years and appreciation for all that he's done. And I know there's a lot of transition, but I think the school committee is excited about the future for Whately. And I think it's a gem of a school and we are going to keep it that way.
Well, it tells you you got 21 applicants already in what the first.
A few days, not even.
Yeah, a few days. So that's pretty cool, so.
Well, that's all I have. Is there anyone in the collaborative?
I did not, there was a collaborative meeting. I didn't go, it was the night of our school concert. But they must, I looked at the agenda and the other documents. And there's an executive report, which I don't know if that got forwarded to you yet. I don't know, Dr. Rockin.
Yeah, he did. I, I really, I didn't really focus on it. I was with him. We went to the, the collaborative school, the Hampshire.
The.
Graduation. What is he, Hampshire Educational Collaborative?
Yeah.
So we went to that graduation on Friday and it, it was, it was very, it was very nice.
Yeah. They had sent a video of some of the students. So I think it was the same one they showed of graduation.
So that, that was very nice.
But in the meeting, I think they talked about moving, because they're, they've been talking about either moving, buying a property or doing, so I think they probably talked about that. And they may have done sort of closed session for that, I'm not sure. And then ad fiscal reports, financial reports, budget proposal, executive director, his evaluation. We did. And the committee presented the findings. So that, that's about it.
Regular business.
Regular businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Principal, you handed out the enrollment.
I did.
I just have one last thing. We'll be in touch via email for your availability to find warrants and going on.
In the summer.
We don't have 10 things to sign. I see we had four things to sign tonight, but don't we usually have 10 things for?
Just gets us through the summer. I asked them to stop by money about a month ago. So that we would have money in the. It looks like we're in good shape with the budget for the end of the year. So thank you Patty and Lynn for keeping that in control. I don't know, the school choice, is there anything? Does anybody know anywhere we are on that? Maybe Kristen.
Yeah, I do know that Louise had sent me an email, but I, I actually put it back to Kristen. And Kristen is pretty much knowing who, where the room is and what the expectations are. I mean, second grade going into third grade, you know, looks pretty good. You know, pretty good to be opened up.
With fourth grade.
Couple of fourth grade. And so we need to really check what I think is amazing, you know, is the 16 and Kindy. So that'll be a discussion that, you know, she can.
So Kristen will be the one putting that at this night?
Do you know if, if anybody has applied for? Cause we had it up on the sign, so.
Yeah. I heard we have quite a bit. I got an email earlier this week. So.
I know last year's kindergarten that went into first grade. This year they went from 16 to 20. With school choice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three school choice.
Okay. Lynn, do you have any other updates?
Just thank you for everything.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Okay, 708 is.